I'd like to open the planning board meeting for May 29. The first order of business is the annual election of officers. In other words, we have our requirement to reorganize as such after the election. I guess if we go from clerk up or chairman down.
Chairman down. And I nominate Kirk to serve as chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Why should I ask this? Discussion, please.
We're good.
No other volunteers? Raise your hand. All right, we have a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
So, what was it? Five? We have, he can vote as his associate. Chris.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, well, let it duly be noted that our associate has given his tacit approval. Any nomination for vice chairman?
I nominate Cliff Pierce, the vice chairman.
Second.
Second. No, he's second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Also need a nomination for clerk. Jean has been clerk for nine years.
Yes, so.
David, you know, we're going to nominate him in abstentia here. Do that. That's what happens when you miss. It's lucky he's not chairman.
David Jackwitz.
I'll second. Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, David, for taking that.
Yeah.
All right, that's done. We're also revisiting the A and R application by Mitchell Harden and Susan Bailey on the Mass Fish Department, Mass Department of Fishing Game on Kittery Avenue. We had a discussion and presentation back on the 15th surrounding whether or not the way was public way. We subsequently received an opinion by town council along with additional information from the applicants as well as the, I guess, end is Anne here, Anne Gagnon from Fishing Game. Has everybody had a chance to read Judy Pickett's, Attorney Judith Pickett's opinion? Remember? Is there any discussion or comments on it? Again, part of that was predicated on documentation that goes back to 1854, 1855, 1856. And then according to, also Cliff, you want to comment on 1951 subdivision law?
Oh, well, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but that's basically an alternative way of approving a Form A if the board feels that the road is not a public way. Is that if the road was in existence in 1951, which it was clear that this road was, and if the existing road is adequate, in the planning board's opinion in terms of such things as visibility, sap, great, things of that nature, adequate for the proposed use, then we can approve a Form A on such a road even if it's not, or may not be, a public way. And I think, I think this particular case, the portion of the road that we're talking about qualifies under either front. Judy's conclusion is that Kittery Road, whether initially a town road or later laid out by the county or created by the county, is a public road and has existed as such since at least 1954. So, that seems clear to me. But I would say even if that wasn't the case, I think it still could be approvable under that alternative method that I was talking about. What do you think, Chris? That definitely is satisfactory?
I, I mean, I think Judy did some good research here and found quite a bit of factual reference to the existence of the road going back to 1856. So, I think we have the basis for that conclusion. And I think you're right, though. I was all along, I'm the one that it was something that existed prior to subdivision control law for that reason, was a public way on that basis. So, I think, I think it was a public way.
Right. I think it should also, we had some discussion in our presentation and some back and forth about maintenance and some research has been done on the records of the highway department. And even though maintenance of Kittery Road ended at the Fennel Drive intersection, the lack of maintenance does not operate as a discontinuous of a public way, of a public road system. So, in light of that, I will take that.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
I know this is a, you're approving this as a reduced frontage lot, and I'm just taking a quick look at all the requirements for the reduced frontage lot. And there's a requirement having to do with driveway, if a driveway is constructed, the grades of the driveway, and also the site distances. Now, I know that they're proposing to put some kind of parking lot. I don't know if you have to take into account site distances, et cetera, et cetera, just because that's under the section for reduced frontage lots. And I just wanted to make sure that everything was being adhered to, because this is, this is under section 6112, right?
Can you comment on that, Ms. Gagnon?
Yeah, we're not going to put in a driveway. We're putting in a little parking lot, but even if we were, that's, a point is the end of the road. So, in terms of site distances, I think, you know, it's critical that we get this approved tonight.
Actually, I should've said, could you announce your name?
Sorry, Anne Gagnon, Department of Fishing Game.
Thanks. And thank you, Katrina.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Tom Vitrus, and I represent Kittery Ave., Realty Trust. And I just want to put my objection to this A and R lot on the record. If you look at the plan submitted by the applicant, you'll see that there, you'll see that there's a fence across the so-called public way. My client would attest in his hand tonight to attest to it if necessary. That fence has been across the so-called public way for a period exceeding 28 years. That being the case, whether this road is a public way or it's not a public way, that gate that's been constructed for 28 years represents an adverse possession of what's behind the gate. My client has constructed it, maintained it, locked it, kept it shut. No one passes through that gate unless my client approves.
But that's, the discussion tonight is based on whether it's a public way, so I'll take it. Thank you for that.
And I also want to just point out that Attorney Pickett apparently did not address that issue. Otherwise, her conclusion is to be vastly different than what they have now. Thank you. Please, all my objections to the record.
All right, are we ready to hold a vote?
Sure.
Have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the Form A.
The second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean. Patricia, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right.
You want to sign it?
Yep. I brought it in.
I'll go to my. Ladies first. Sorry, I don't, you're gonna.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
On the record, I appreciate.
Great public use.
You did great research, so.
Oh, it's a, it's a new question.
Did the engineer provide those 1856 grants, or did we're?
Did he send it to you, that 1856 one?
Yeah, the, he found one map, but the town meeting votes, I believe, which she researched herself with the story that the.
About Mary, probably.
Right.
Oh, okay. I was wondering how that came, that she came upon, that was with his.
I'll probably memorize.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I once learned from a very good salesman, I don't know, you sold the sale, you stopped selling, but I did have some affidavits from one of the.
We didn't finish the work.
Well, that, you know, it all, still, submit it, please. Are you pleased with that?
Sure.
As part of the file?
Yeah.
That's why we have a planner, to help compile.
I've got three copies, there are two affidavits, one from Sue and myself, and one from Paul Lemmons.
Oh, Paul.
Paul Lemmons, yeah, Paul lives in the neighborhood, and.
Oh, just copies?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You can have them if you want. He lives in the neighborhood, he was one of the kids riding that school bus when he grew up. He was one of the contracts.
We're going under the next agenda.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah. He knows as well as anyone that it was.
He helped out in ski programs.
Oh, yeah? Well, it's, that's relevant.
No, exactly. If anything, he's playing an adverse possession of the street. Subjectively. Right, right. You're not the law, you're not against, against adverse possession against the diet, right? And I think you're right, I think it's against sovereign communities.
No, submit.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's.
We get our sign copy for our files from the registry.
I don't think it's been continuous, because that gate's open.
So, excuse me.
And you can.
Ms. Gagnon, do you have, you guys have everything you need?
I believe we do, yep. All we need is the signed.
Okay. And please feel free to contact Katrina with additional information.
Yeah, I'll, I'll like a copy of Judy's.
And Judy, we're also.
Oh, I emailed it to you.
We're also anticipating some.
At about five.
We're anticipating some original documents from this really early recent.
I'm sorry.
The original documents are also forthcoming, but some of the ones that the opinion is based on.
Oh, excellent.
That research, yes, so.
Katrina will.
You can, when, when those come.
They'll be public.
From Ms. Pickett.
Oh, yes.
That's okay. We take this to the registry.
What we'll do is we'll record this just before we close, and so it, hopefully that will definitely be before the end of June, and then we'll send you, we'll let you know as soon as that happens.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do it all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next part of the agenda is just some brief project updates. I will give a chance, this is not the format this time, to go through the entire history of the Market Basket project, which goes back to 1986 or even before, in the planning stages, and the various expansion in '93, and the subsequent septic system in 2009. The Abutters and Kittery Road have been following this, obviously, since the inception of the project, along with the special permit and the site plan reviews that took place. The Abutters went to the selectmen to bring them up to speed, and I'm looking for that memo. Help me out here, Katrina.
Oh, it's in, it's in the additional?
It's A, right? No, it's B, sorry.
Well, I.
After A is B. All right. And that was a meeting that took place several Mondays ago, and a week later, we received a memo from the selectmen based on some of the input. Today, we also received a letter commenting on this planning board response to the Abutters' concerns by John Matthews, who works for, I always get the acronym wrong, RMD, Retail Management Development, which is the, I believe, the leasing, development, and architectural branch of Board de Mullis.
That's right.
So, in other words, representing, John Matthews represents the corporation, right?
Yes, yes.
Or the entity. The owners, the owners of Market Basket and the associated tenants in the plaza, correct? And the whole.
Real estate matters for the supermarket.
Yeah, but, but the entire Market Basket Plaza, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All of them.
And, how many are there now? Quite a few, and more to be built. So, I just wanted to enter this into the record. Robert Snow, the chair, was trying to summarize some of the, well, just to back up a bit. Mr. Curran, who's here also, Dick Curran, and some other Abutters have done quite a bit of research and submitted, and this was, I believe, the first time the selectmen kind of heard the entire history. Well, you can't hear the entire history in 40 minutes, but a 40-minute summary of the history. The Board of Selectmen heard concerns near Abutters and marketplace property violations of special permit during a meeting on May 13, 2013. We were disturbed to learn that Market Basket violated the terms of special permit by cutting down trees. There ain't no cut zone that abuts the backyards of the property owners of Cedarwood Lane. Those trees serve as a natural visual and audible buffer between the commercial population of Market Basket and the residential properties. The Cedarwood Lane and Abutters have now lost the drum and use in their backyards. The tranquil backyard has become a noisy and trashy area for them since the trees were cut down. What's relevant here, some of the questions that come, what are the consequences to a permit holder? This is what I want from planning board members, because this was actually written and sent to the planner and sent to me. What are the consequences to a permit holder who violates the terms and conditions of special permit? What actions has the planning board taken in response to the permit holder violation of terms and conditions of permit? It is unclear to the Board of Selectmen if the planning board has approved a mitigating measure to offset desecration in the wooded area that Abutters property. Cedarwood Lane residents express their dismay to us that the property owner's agents proposing a nine-foot picket fence. Here's the Board of Selectmen's opinion that the planning board needs to communicate directly with the property owner to move supermarkets in. 875 E Street, Tewksbury, Mass. 187001876. Regarding these violations, not the agent. Furthermore, the residents expressed to us an interest in having a horizontal barrier installed. Based on the discussion at our meeting, it appears the planning board needs to work directly with the property owner to mitigate the damage done to the Abutters as a result of cutting down those trees. All special permit holders need to be held accountable for complying with their permits. Failure to do so should result in periodic measures. Please keep the Board of Selectmen updated in this matter. I plan to do such, and in addition, to communicate with all parties involved to come to a resolution, but I think it's important. I've been doing some thinking about this, whether or not the history of this situation dictates that maybe we should, you know, take a little time and maybe have, you know, Judy Pickett opine on whether or not, you know, this is something that should have been, there's a history that goes far, this is what happens, you know, the board changes, you know, this is all new members, and whether or not this should go back and, and would have been a modification, you know, based on the site plan, because the fence is in addition to a site plan. And whether it necessitates looking at the special permit for the site. To be honest, I did look at the special permit before the selectmen's meeting, and there's, there's a, what, there was a modification of it based on, what, '93 was an expansion when TJ Maxx went in. At that time, it was also an approval of a reserved septic system. It just so happened that the reserved septic system was overlay a crucial or pivotal, or whatever you want to say, important buffer of trees that existed in, between the plaza, the back of the plaza and the Abutters. And when in 2009, De Mullis came forth, and you can actually tell me if I'm off base here, when De Mullis applied for a emergency septic repair or repair of their septic system, actually replacement of a failed septic system?
Be glad to address it if you wish.
Oh, okay, I'm just, yeah. Anyway, the septic system was improved, and it went to the reserve area, which, at that time, the wooded barfa was then removed. There was a mitigating, a mitigation plan, which we have copies of from 2009, that was in place, that was approved by the planning board, was approved by the Board of Health and the Planning Board at that time. Fast forwarding to now, I just want to make sure that, before we come to a conclusion that the Abutters have had every chance in a public forum, we've tried to do this informally, and I don't think that we'll come to the point where either, and here we are, almost four years later, because the septic system was installed in the spring, I believe, or what, 2010?
Late in the year, yeah.
Late in the year, in 2010. And now we're in 2013, so we have a period between the time the septic system was actually, the site work was done and installed, and we're still, in between then and now, there has been, obviously, some disruption to the lives of the Abutters, based on the documentation that I've seen and that the selectmen have seen. So, I guess I'm just looking at it from a procedural standpoint. I'm not here to play any blame game. I'm not, and that's not important. I want to come to a resolution, but procedurally, I'd just like to do it in all respects properly.
What is the issue? The legal issue that we're talking about, is that we, whether we have to hold a public hearing before we approve this? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's really the precedent. All right, well, John, you took, I thank you for coming, so. You modified, tell me, I know you're in the process of trying to do something, and you might want to summarize.
Well, I came with a suggestion, if I may.
Also, I'd like to recognize Robert Snow, the chair of the selectmen, who's also.
May I address the board briefly?
Sure.
I'm also in receipt of a memo from this town planner, Katrina O'Leary, as a result of a meeting that she had with the Abutters, and they've.
Right, we do have a summary of that, too, that's true.
Right, and they propose some.
Does everybody have that?
I do.
Just to make sure that all the planning board numbers are on the page of the.
They propose some reasonable requests, some modifications to things we've submitted, and all I was going to suggest is that Mr. Curran maybe come to the table, we lay the plan out, we take a marker, make some markings on this plan, because I do have this fence being fabricated, and if it needs to be extended, another 36 feet or whatever the number.
I'll tell you, I would, I would not want to do that now. I want your team.
Yeah.
Because, to my knowledge, the building inspector gave me a memo today.
Right.
And the existing, I would like to have it in a format that would actually pass muster with the building inspector by code.
Okay.
And that way, we're all talking on the same page, in a professional sense. You know what I mean?
Sure.
Otherwise, it may have to get modified again. It has to go to the building inspector and.
I know, he has for four foot.
Yeah, just to.
Plains where we're going to modify.
Yeah, I mean, I can read that into the record, but you have a copy. Did you give him a copy, John?
I have.
He took the time, yeah. And I think it's important that your team, architectural team, and, for example, the building inspector would like the permit must be pulled by someone with a construction supervisor license, in other words, a CSL. And right now, all I have on file, I know you brought some more plans tonight, but I think those are important for, if this thing is planned to be put in, it has to be in a format, I think, you know, the plans have to show an overlay where it's going to go, some details for, construction details, how it's going to be built, how it's going to be secured, the materials. I think it's a great start. All I got between, before tonight's meeting was this, and this is simply a sketch, you know, this is not sufficient to pull a permit. I think it's important, we normally look at things that are, and, you know, at least, I mean, this isn't, is this stamped by anyone?
No, but it can be.
Yeah.
And we're going to modify it to the four foot, and we're going to pull permit as required.
I mean, we can take the time, it's fine to look at, at least see what, just, it's important for a few minutes here, maybe, to get over any misconceptions between the memos back and forth, you know.
Right.
In the future, because down the road, De Mullis, what if the fence.
Yeah, that, that way, I prefer a public hearing, take a vote on something that's actually going to be built and not. I want to get it from the theoretical, non-stamped stage to a stage where you can actually pull a permit.
Sure. This is the plan that I brought to the board last year, I guess it was, and it shows the existing leach field. I think this is the plan you've been working with as well.
Yes, this, John.
Shows the location of the fence, and.
From beginning to end, the entire linear.
Right, right here. And so, that, what we've given you is a detail of one section, showing the materials and all of that.
Yeah.
Yep. And I guess I could sit with Mr. Curran after the meeting and redline this to understand where they want the additional fence, where they want.
Yeah, but that doesn't show the entire layout. I mean, I think it has to be superimposed on what you sent to us today, you know, a larger view. And that's just the leach field with a few, and also, I need to get existing conditions. I don't know how many trees have died, how many were put in according to the plan.
Okay.
You had a plan based in '93 that had mitigative measures.
That's right, and we planted those.
And that was brought forward, but I don't know how many, I.
Okay. We'll go out and count them.
I need existing, I mean, I, all I have is this, and this is great, but, and this is what you have, what you're looking at, more or less, right?
Right.
But, does this reflect existing conditions versus what we have now and where we're going to go to get this?
Okay.
You know, that's, that's the way you do things. I mean, we can't talk, you know, I don't know whether this is in there, I mean, I go back there, I can't.
Well, I'll go back and count them.
Count them, but are they alive? What height are they?
Yeah, big bro.
I know that you're planning to put in, based on your memo, some five, five to six footers. I want to ask the planning board, going forward, when you give us something, is that high enough? I mean, should they be higher?
I think five to six is a good start, but, you know, they grow fast.
Should we have varying heights? You know, so that, you know, the white pines, are they all white pines? Should we put in some hemlocks or something? You made a good suggestion that, you know, maybe some diversity, so you.
I think, I think hemlocks stay fuller at the bottom. Pines tend to lose all the branches on the bottom.
I mean, you have experts, I mean, like you said, you've got a zillion sites, I've seen.
Yep.
You know, something that also.
And you can put water dendrons in, too, that fill in, in the shade.
You know, anything that would help dead and sound, anything, I mean, white pines are fine if you crown them, sometimes the bottom, you know, the, leave the needles go, right?
Eventually, they will be.
And then you're.
But that'll, you know, be a while, but eventually they will.
I mean, I'm not making a comment on, you know, you had, there's an opinion that, you know, this, this is why I want the, this is the only vote I'm going to take tonight, that there was the spirit of the original, what I've researched, the spirit of the original special permit was that the Abutters, going forward from 1989, this was the first big box store in Raleigh, right?
Sure.
That the Abutters would, you know, from, in terms of quiet enjoyment, would really not smell it too much here or see it. And I'm not going to make an opinion going forward, I don't see a huge paper trail, you know, that they've had to hold their nose or that, you know, that, you know, I'm not going, but that was the spirit of the special permit. And the special permit alluded to that, special permit, have ser, memos that back that up, and I read, you know, that was a planning board at that time. And I know from at least 2009 on, when the, when the buffer was taken away, that that spirit probably hasn't been adhered to. That's all, that's all, I mean. And I think four years, three years later, I think it's time for a large corporation to, as a good neighbor, to get this done. I think you've tried to engage recently, but why has it taken three years? Maybe we should have modified, held a per, you know, special hea, a hearing right away as soon as we knew that you were going to, you know, start implementing this, or whether or not this was a modification of the, you know, sufficient that we needed to look at the, you know, the file, that's all. So, I mean, I know you tried to do it without that, but, you know, they have, you've done de facto public hearings, but that's de facto, that's not, you know, they're not, they're not the way we normally do things. We normally what, put in the paper, we do it procedurally. That's all. And I, I think it has to do with De Mullis being a good neighbor, I'm not, and just making sure they get this done.
I don't know that a public hearing is required for this, though.
I'm, I'm not sure, that's what the legal opinion would be. I, I'm new to this, chairman, I don't know.
It's a modification of a buffer, I mean, it's not, there are no new buildings.
It's a modification of a site plan.
Well.
Not necessarily a special permit.
Particularly the buffer on the, on the approved site plan. I mean, my.
But, but it puts things for the record, and maybe we'll get De Mullis to move a little faster than three years. I don't think there's any excuse that this is taking. These things can already be three or four feet higher by now.
Well, public hearing can drag the process out, though, so, you know, I mean, if this can be done quickly and informally, and I'm not hearing any disagreement from John about any of the issues.
But I'm starting the memo wars. I don't want any more memos back and forth that you, you wrote a memo saying that you disagreed with some of the points. That needs to stop, and we need to get into the implementation. And I think it's very, very important that De Mullis engage the Abutters. Because if you engage the Abutters, you're engaging citizens of the town, okay, who pay their taxes, and De Mullis, okay, as a citizen of the town, should not disrupt the lives of the Abutters, no more than one neighbor could do it to another neighbor without some ram, that's why we have zoning, that's why we have a process.[1735.75] I don't want any more memos back and forth that you, you wrote a memo saying that you disagreed with some of the points. That needs to stop, and we need to get into the implementation. And I think it's very, very important that the mullahs engage the abutters. Because if you engage the abutters, you're engaging citizens of the town, okay? Who pay their taxes. And the mullahs, okay, as a citizen of the town, should not disrupt the lives of the abutters. No more than one neighbor could do it to another neighbor without some ram, that's why we have zoning. That's why we have a process. And I'm not saying it never happens, but that's why we have, that's why we even exist. If that doesn't happen, then we should just go home, you know.
Right, no, I agree with all that. All I'm saying is I don't know that we have to go to a public hearing to accomplish this. I think if John puts together an appropriate plan that satisfies the abutters and the board as to all the issues, then I think we can approve it without a public hearing. That's my opinion, I don't know.
But at least in a public hearing process, possibly, that would force the mullahs to actually submit a plan that actually is a plan that can be built from. Right now, you've been held, what's that plan dated?
It's a year old. But it shows, it shows a nine-foot fence, it shows a section, it shows it on the ground.
It shows a theoretical fence, which is good. It shows a linear, but is it dimensionalized? But those trees, you know, that, it shows a bunch of white pines in the front, right?
The existing trees are here, white pines, white pines. These, this is the berm we built. You know, when we built the leach field, we built the berm as we had advised the board, had helped advise the planning board.
I acknowledge that, I did acknowledge that.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure how many lived or how many, I guess, you know.
No, they, I mean, they've grown.
But I also need a plan, this is where, I need more detail. I need a commitment from Market Basket or from your, you know, the powers that be, that they're going to come in with a watering truck in the summer, that they're going to replace any dead trees. They're going to be healthy, and I would also like to take into the plan, you know, is, you know, whether there should be some diversity there rather than just all white pines. You know, it's not like, you know, the means exist there. And it's important, I think, from a PR standpoint. Don't you?
Yes, I do, and, you know, we did what we thought was right when we built the leach field, and we built the berm, and we put the landscape up, and we notified the proper parties.
If you go to the properties, and I have been, they can see the back of the building, they can see the lights. Okay, they're, you know, we have hours, I think they're reasonable hours from, you know. We gave you permission to go in at seven, which are reasonable hours, but yet trucks are going in and idling before seven. That should not happen. The sign hasn't been changed. I haven't seen a directive or a copy of a memo that you sent to your vendors that says to not come in and idle your truck at six o'clock.
They go out every year. They go out every year.
You'd like, what, to us?
No, to the...
We have a town plan.
To every tenant in the store. And we tell them to post it in their receiving area.
But if we have abutters that actually, and I'm not going to say that the abutters are lying.
I'm not either, because particularly the trash trucks live like, that happens a lot.
I know, I have trash trucks going down my street at three in the morning. Right outside the window. But it shouldn't happen. That's the rule. You're in a small rural town, and that's it. And it shouldn't happen, there shouldn't be any trailers, everything should be according to the permit. And that's the bottom line, landscaping in front, being, you know, cared to, you know, kept up. And, you know, and I think a reasonable attempt to do so, you know, with snow removal, all the conditions. And I think as a good citizen, that has to be done, and that's part of our rule, part of the building inspector's role, it's part of the cooperation that you should have with us especially in terms of if you have future expansion plans. And this shouldn't even be a discussion. It shouldn't take three years, in my opinion. I don't know, anybody else? I'm through talking.
I didn't know it took three years, but you just made a suggestion to sit down, Mr. Curran, right now, and maybe hash this out. And if you can come to terms right now, I mean, somebody mentioned hemlocks, gotta be white camouflaged fence. You wouldn't even see it, you know, if you want to put some variety, but maybe you guys could come to something right now and bring it back. I don't know, even right now, before we leave.
Next week, we have a meeting. We're meeting next Wednesday, right?
I'd like to see this get done, you know, as quick as possible.
And I planted hemlocks, yeah.
Everybody on Cedarwood.
You see them in front of my house, I planted hemlocks because of the truck traffic on that street. And they are, you're right, they go right to the ground.
Yes, that's the beauty of it.
They do well.
They didn't come yet, yeah, unbelievable, they were just sprigs.
They make a great sound.
I was kind of waiting for them to die. Yeah, I didn't get any wooly aphid, you know.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest maybe I could sit down with both Mr. Matthews and Mr. Curran? We can mark up a plan and then possibly bring it back next week?
And in the meantime, we will pull a file, and I'm going to do, you know, I'd like to do some research.
Mr. Curran would like to say something?
Mr. Chairman, Dick Curran, sixteen Cedarwood Lane, if I might state. We received this, the abutters received this plan back the fifth of September, two thousand and twelve. And we left, in principle, we left that it was a good plan, it was something that we perhaps could live with, but we needed to review it a little bit. Now, the suggestion, Mr. Pierce, that Mr. Matthews and myself get together, I don't think that's, I'm not saying that it's not going to happen, it's not going to resolve the issue, but I think what I'd like to suggest as a spokesperson for the abutters is that we have one of the members of the planning board, if John represents Market Basket, then John and the abutters meet on the property so we can not only define on a piece of paper what's going to happen, also be able to walk and say, here's where it's going to start, here's where it's going to finish, the fence area, and then we can on-site go through what additional requests the abutters would like to make. I also think that it should be a formal understanding with an agreement between the town and Market Basket, orders of conditions, whatever it be, special permits, that states if something happens, such as the trees, if the fence rots in two to three years, it's going to be replaced. Because at the end of the day, once we leave here, just as you have stated, Mr. Chairman, boards change, but documentation doesn't.
Right, well, I wasn't suggesting, Dick, that there wouldn't be that kind of formal decision from the board, but we're not suggesting that we don't have to go through a public hearing process to do that. And we do that quite frequently when we think that a proposed modification is not major, or if it's a minor one, we'll basically, you know, get the plan, see what the modification is. And if in our opinion it's minor, that means we don't have to hold a public hear, but we then issue a decision on that modification. And we can also, in that decision, include conditions such, you know, the types that you're talking about. So, I wasn't suggesting that that wouldn't take place.
I would like to see, I think there's been a good dialogue. I've heard, you know, we've had, I've heard a lot from the abutters, a lot John, Mr. Matthews has as well. And I'm kind of a plan person, you know, I know, just because a plan is what actually gets built. You know, a construction supervisor and/or a contractor, GC, actually builds from a plan. And this ensures that some of your concerns are complied with or, you know, are listened to. That it also shifts the burden of responsibility to code the building inspector, both in the sense of materials and construction methods, and also, you know, maintenance as needed. And then it shifts, then that also makes it a more formal process. It's not just a planning board. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a GC. As we all have different experiences in that regard, you have plenty of fences around your house. But a building inspector knows code, and part of code is to have things last a certain number of years. Based on my knowledge, you know, the ceder, some of the materials are being used here, you know, are thought out by a fence company to be long-lasting materials, white cedar, pressure treated. Whether or not nine feet is enough, the trouble with going higher, that becomes another engineering situation, I guess, with the building inspectors, am I correct?
We cannot go higher.
Now, why is that?
Exactly what you're saying.
But that's something, I want, I would like a large corporation, like anyone who wants to build something, or get a CO, or get a permit to build plumbing, electrical, every, I mean, this should be no different. You know, the mullahs wants to do a renovation to put in the Verizon store, okay? They have to go in and they have to pull a permit. You're pulling a permit here, and this is what I want to see.
So, we need plans sufficient for the building inspector to issue a permit.
Yeah, before, I mean, otherwise, we're just going back and forth here. I would be willing to go out, I have no trouble with going out to the site. I've been out there a number of times alone, you know, both on your side, Cedarwood Lane, and on the other side. And you're right, I can't really reconcile what tree, you know. But I want them to have a plan, not just theoretical, a bunch of little duck, that with a species like, like Mr. Pierce has always asked for, what landscape, you know, we do that all the time. He asks for the species, landscape plans, where they're going to be, the heights, the calipers, with notes. Do you see any notes?
Yeah.
No. You know, that's easy to do. You said you've engaged a landscape architect, you've engaged a fence company. Now pull it together as a team and put it in a format that we can look at and that the building inspector can approve and that you can understand clearly what's going to be built. That's my opinion.
And then we can even place trees in the field and modify the locations to where the neighbors want it.
Yeah, and then you might get better screenings, both sound, visual. And I want, I don't want this to, I think if there are lighting issues, if there are issues with lighting, you know, this is formal, that still exists, or with trucks, there has to be a commitment in a letter from the mullahs just to, you know, it's either that or this is going to be ongoing. And a mullah's commitment to not have trucks go in before seven, and to not have lights on all night, to not have noise all night. I mean, they have to make that commitment, I would think. Because we're big cooperative, you just got permission to what, put in new units, right? HVAC units on top and...
For the Verizon store?
Yeah, I mean, what, on top of the building? And you also got permission, Board of Health, to put in a new septic. You know, so, you know, I think the town has been cooperative, it's been a successful store. It's time for them to ante up, I think. And I don't think it's that difficult. I think we're close to being there.
And I think the building inspector's been helpful to give us some specs in terms of what he wants, and, you know, we'll comply with it, there's no issue there.
But you must have resources on staff, you have architects and things that know.
Oh, we do. Yep, but the specific request for the four-foot footings, that's his determination, it's not something, we would have gone with a three-foot.
Yeah, but even when you put in a deck, you're supposed to do four feet under the foot.
It's a fence.
It's also a nine-foot fence.
So, that's why, so we agree.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
How high is the fence? I'm confused.
Nine feet.
Nine, that's what you're doing.
It's an eight-foot panel, raised a foot off the...
And he wants details how they're going to be adhered to, the steel posts? Those kind of things. But that's the kind of construction detail you would put if you were submitting a plan for a deck. You know, especially one above ground. Can we do that?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. One question. And I've been, Kurt, I don't want to prolong it any more than it's already been, it's been four years.
Three.
Well, been four since we've been involved in the two thousand and nine.
I know, but I mean, I have to go from the time the septic was built.
One question, John. This original plan that you gave us, the proposal was horizontal boards, two inches by ten inches, pressure treated.
This was a concept by Steve Harrison. Yep, and it was intended to be a fence that would go up and eventually fall down. This is exactly Steve's words.
This potentially fall down?
Yep, yeah, it was intended as a barricade-type structure.
The fence he's talking, Dick's talking?
The one that's on this plan, right?
Not as a permanent structure.
And everyone said, we want a permanent fence, okay? Now, when you talk permanent fence, you go concrete footings, you go steel poles, and you put...
Galv e-still poles.
Yep, resilient cedar over the pressure treated so that if dirt piles up along the end, the bottom of the fence, the pressure treated protects the cedar, the cedar will last. You know, I've had this same type of fence in my yard for more than twenty years. It's perfectly fine, and, you know, that's the kind, that's why you do a white cedar fence.
But I need to, I need to see specs that they're going to butt, I know you've written it in a narrative, but it has to, you have people on staff who can engineer this.
Well, I gave you, I gave you a section.
That's a second.
That's, that's a section, every one of these.
Full-size plans with what you plan to do. Not this, not a mishmash. We're not in the business, okay, of synthesizing and theorizing plans that are integrated with old plans, new plans. You know, that's not a professional approach, in my opinion.
All I want to understand is from the memo from last week that you had with Katrina, where this additional fence goes, so I can get it on the plan.
Is that from a hall? Is that, yeah, okay, do you want?
We can do that on the hall.
Contact the hall, if you guys can come to a time when you want to get together before next meeting, let's do it. It would have to be Wednesday on next week, because I won't be here Monday until... Or if some other board members want to come up?
I'm on my way from Friday night till Monday night.
What, this Friday? Yeah, so maybe next Wednesday or Thursday?
When is your next meeting?
A week from Wednesday.
A week from today. A week from today.
Oh, so it would have to be the meeting after that, right?
About tomorrow.
It could be Wednesday during the day before the meeting.
Yeah, I could do that in the morning.
I'll be back Wednesday, how about Wednesday? Yeah, we'll do it in the morning on Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
All right, come to an agreement, please, and report to Katrina, she'll report to me. All right? Any other discussion on whether or not, I think in the meantime, I would also like to address, Chairman Snow, would you like to respond to what you've heard this evening? Right, you know, I think it just has to be a commitment in writing, not defensive responses based on, I understand both sides, but it has to be commitment in terms of what the expectations are, and your corporate commitment to follow them. I mean, where's the corporate commitment? You're an agent, you're an employee of them, but where's the corporate commitment? Is it only through you or is it from?
They've authorized the fence, they've authorized the mitigation.
Have they, but have they responded to the complaints at all? The veracity of the complaints?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I wanted to see for the record, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. Thanks a lot, and we'll see, next Wednesday morning can work, and then, it's good that we're meeting so soon. Dick, you're going to go see John?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we just have, the other thing briefly. You want, you have anything to say about hours?
Yes, yes, I had called Katrina.
Oh, you need, your name and...
Robin Pegler, below sixty-one Dodge Road. I called Katrina in regard to the hours of operation of the construction that's going on at the golf course. I was, went to just about every single one of the meetings except for, I believe, two at the very end because I had something happening going on with my family and I was not able to. But I had attended every single meeting, and I heard discussion in regard to hours, business hours, when the trucks would be coming and going, the whole thing. And I know for a fact, because I did speak with quite a few of the neighbors in the area that did go to some of these meetings, too, that the hours were discussed, they agreed with me, they were discussed. And one of the things that they, who talked about, they talked about were starting. Starting was going to, construction started around seven o'clock, it's a typical business day of construction.
Sometimes earlier, but seven's, yeah.
It has been starting earlier, actually, but that's not even...
No, seven was what was generally agreed upon or not?
It was, yes, and that's fine, I mean, even earlier was fine, I'm not complaining about that.
Seven, okay, is what we said.
Seven, but what I did have as my concern was until seven o'clock at night.
I talked to the owner today, I think there's a general agreement, an agreement, you know, based on sensitivity to the neighbors that except for, that generally they should stop before five, you know, seven to five. And seven and earlier on Saturdays, you know, not till five on Saturdays, but earlier in the afternoon, like three. And that the only, they did have a couple people on site between the hours of when almost everyone left. There were some people there doing maintenance, like greasing, you know, they were still working on machines.
Well, this was rocks, piling rocks into the dump truck.
Yeah, that shouldn't happen. All I, I think there's a commitment that they were basically just doing some routine maintenance of machines between the hours that the site people left, you know.
And that's fine, I mean...
Because that's on-site, and, you know, that's no more truck traffic.
And that would not be, that's right, nuisance to any of the neighbors, it's the noise, the noise is coming from the actual construction. Picking up those rocks, dropping them into the dumpster, the dump truck, that's what we've been listening to.
And what time, well, that's not...
And one night, we actually, my husband actually called, it was quarter of seven, he called the police. He says, when does this end? I'm trying to find out the times.
Which is why we followed up on it, so just keep us apprised. Like I said, I got that commitment today, you know, seven to five, nothing after.
And that's reasonable. I just don't think seven is reasonable.
And that's that, yeah, I tend to agree with that. And that's, that's coming from the owner. So, he is cognizant, he has heard. In addition, the police have been cognizant of if there's any speeding. They did set some traps, they didn't catch any one of the trucks. They actually may have caught some of the neighbors.
Probably.
But I mean, we are ongoing, we are in constant dialogue. He has invited planning board members to go out to the site at any point, you know, to see how it's being run, as well as the planner, at any point. And, you know, I know that, Larry, you've been going out there, right?
Yes.
And so, just, we need to stay on top of it, both from a dust sweeping, especially as the summer comes on. You've got to see, when things dry out, it's definitely going to be an issue that has to need a water truck and the sweeper has to be going more often.
Actually, I called Katrina about that a few weeks ago, about the dust.
Oh, right, and then it was right before it started raising.
It dissipated, actually, they went out, they had water trucks, the dust literally dissipated. The dust literally dissipated.
Tell Katrina that.
Before they did, it was, you couldn't see it getting...
Well, it's really dry out too. Two weeks ago, we hadn't had rain for about a week, I think.
That's right, but they did go out there with their water trucks, and I've actually seen them spraying down the mountains.
Thank you for going down there. We also had a plane room, Steve Castillo just went down. We need to also be cognizant of down at Village Green too. You know, the dirt on Main Street, on 1A, which is a scenic road and should in the summer, I don't think, you should have, uh, people coming to Raleigh as tourists and they get covered in, you know, dust.
It looked like a dirt road this morning.
Yeah.
I mean, years it was raining.
Well, the neighbors shouldn't have to deal with that either.
No, because it really, I, I...
I'm extremely sympathetic to that, first of all, because of the Ping redevelopments.
Big time, yeah.
And now the water treatment plant, it's really annoying.
No, mud, mud.
But they, they don't work long hours and, and, um, they try to go real slow. And they do put down, uh, a chemical to keep dust down.
Tomorrow, when that dries...
Calcium chlorine?
It's gonna be a dust bowl down there on Main Street, I assure you that.
They need to sweep it. You have to sweep these sites, you know, you have to. I know that, I mean, I was next to a construction site down a quarter of a, for two and a half years. It went on, they had to sweep it all the time, you know?
I worked for enough and they, for them to operate, they had to sweep, uh, around the plant and a mile that way, and a mile that way, every single day, twice a day. Twice a day, a mile away each way.
It may be prudent, you know, during summer to have a sweeper on site. I'm sure they'd be amenable to that, it's not a big deal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Could I, could I just, um, get you to specify, is there, are the hours of operation just for construction? So that when they start selling units and showing units, they can, they can be working in there beyond five, right?
I didn't, I didn't have that dialogue, so I don't know. I didn't have that dialogue.
I would think it was just, it would just be construction that would be the most bothersome.
No, I just wanted to respond to the...
That wouldn't be, it would be done ways from that.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the issues that will arrive to us and we'll continue.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll continue to respond to it, all right?
Thank you.
All right, no problem. All right, uh, lastly, um, I wanna go through the approval of minutes. May fifteen minutes, any comments, if you are coming up?
Um, yes, I mean, they were excellent, but I think, um, I think I'd like to see one word change, and that's under project updates, the very last line on the first page.
I'm so glad, minutes is... It's D, 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 D.
Sorry, I have to be listening as well.
Yeah, the very last, uh, line of project updates on the first page.
On the first page?
Yeah, where it says that...
On the first page?
Yeah, he recommends that they work with the neighbors and business owner to come up with a plan that will appease the abutters, and appease is probably not the right word, and maybe satisfy.
To address the abutters' concerns, that's all.
Or that, I was gonna say satisfy.
Yeah, appease is the wrong word, yeah.
Satisfy, is satisfied with?
No, not satisfy, to address the plan that addresses the concerns of the abutters. Cause all you're doing is addressing their concerns.
Right.
Or to mitigate their worries, yeah.
Can't promise that is bad.
No, just tell me what you're writing, no?
No, I'm not, you know.
Address.
I'm not the...
Scratch, pee, and block the concern.
I don't speak for the parties, I'm just, we're in between.
But that's the only, um, change I want from you.
Thanks for doing that.
Okay, um, did you vote on those yet?
I'll make a motion, we approved the minutes.
I'll second.
Gene Patrol's seconding all of them, babe.
Aye.
Um, lastly, before we adjourn, are there any, uh, comments on the, uh, planning board expenses? Or Larry, do you have any comments on it? If you notice, I would, you know, take, you can see this is a kind of a... Larry, this is, does this sync with your stuff? Did you get copies of this?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The, uh, what's left in the various projects carried over.
He doesn't get a copy of this stuff.
He doesn't get a copy of these?
You didn't want one, right?
No, but I think if you're talking about the summary, uh, Gina, my office is working with Katrina, so I don't have, I can't tell you if that's...
What we're trying to do, you know, generally speaking, is to try to close out some of these or combine them to simplify what had happened in the past. Projects get split into pieces and, and you end up with, uh, for example, a case in point would be, uh, down at Ipswich Bay Glass, whether there are like three accounts. And right now, we're dealing with one issue and maybe, and, and having that reviewed for the next step and the next expansion. And just as a comment, and that also, Ipswich Bay Glass has, uh, agreed to, uh, you know, pay the planning consultant to, uh, review, you know, all the items that we need for our next meeting. And, and to do it right, is that true?
That's true, but you're not gonna have everything for the next meeting, so if you wanna talk about that.
Well, it's not, but in any case, they've agreed to...
Yeah, to, uh, put some money in the account.
No, it'd be difficult now because of the vote that we took. But just make sure Katrina's taking the time to do this. If people have any questions, uh, email or, you know, is there a transfer you wanna mention, Jeff? Before we adjourn?
Uh, no, the selectmen did approve the transfer at the meeting that you and I went to, and I believe the finance committee will be, um, make, taking the final vote on that tonight, right now, in fact.
All right, do you have anything?
Um, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, I was asked to look at the condo documents for the Raleigh Country Club.
That's right.
Which I actually did.
A few fifty-something pages.
Um, and this is not my field of expertise, but they look okay to me. And, and just a few things that I think we'd be interested in, uh, most interested in is, um, this, uh, these say that, um, that first of all, the road will be a private way, not, not taken by the town, so that's good. That there's no...
Which way to ask for.
Right. That there, that there'll be no on-street parking, which is one of our conditions. And basically, there's a clause in here that, that says that unit owners assume the risk of any, uh, anything adverse happening from, because of the proximity of the country club, uh, which is, I think, is good for the town, because it, you know, puts people on notice that they are living in a country club development.
And they do back up to the holes.
Yeah, so, rather than going to the town complex, so, you know, understand what it is good.
Right, they don't pit the town against the country club.
Right, so it looks okay to me.
Which is a, obviously a prerequisite for them to get, um, occupancy permits for some of the first phase, you know? This has to be approved by us for our future meeting.
And I could probably add too, that Jill has been copying me on emails to the, um, for the conservation restriction, um, just making sure, and she, she keeps saying, you know, "I haven't heard back from you in three months, and, uh, we really would like to hear back from the state on the conservation restriction, because it will hold up the occupancy permit." So, she has been sending regular emails to the state, so hopefully the state will come for her soon.
Actually told them the building permit, right?
No.
Well, no, building permits have been issued, I believe.
Yeah, cause they, yeah, the first conditions were met for the first phase.
Oh, okay, cause I noticed they haven't started a foundation yet, so it is...
It's the occupancy permits. Yeah, no, they can do that, they can have that, they just can't get the occupancy. It's occupancy permits, that they can.
Okay, okay.
Larry, is that correct?
Yeah.
And it, it will take a while when they get it back from the state too, because then the town is reviewing, the selectmen have to approve it.
Right.
Town council will be looking at it again, probably. So it isn't just a quick thing when it gets...
But I'll feel a lot better when the state signs up on it, you know?
Right.
What's, we feel that they will.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any comments on the site with the rain?
No, um, last time I was there, we're talking about Raleigh Country Club. Uh, the last time I was there, and I'm probably gonna get there tomorrow, uh, was to do pressure tests, you know, in all the sewer lines, which I'll check out.
Good.
Did the same thing last week at, uh...
Village Green?
Village Green, yeah. And I'm not gonna get to Village Green or Raleigh Country Club tomorrow until probably early afternoon, but I'll try to give them a call, Village Green on the street out here, cause when I came back tonight, I don't, I don't know what happened today, tracking all that dirt out there after the rain, but, uh, they've been pretty good about keeping it clean, keeping a lot of fresh grass.
But when it dries, when it gets ninety-one degrees on Friday without being swept up.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, it's gonna be a dust bowl.
So we track it out as mud, and then it dries in terms of dust, is that basically what...
Yeah, I mean, and I think, I was surprised to see it before I even got to the meeting tonight, because it's been pretty good. I mean, they've been replacing the stone out in the front and doing a good job, so...
Need a combination of a water truck and a sweeper, yeah?
Well, yeah. And, and as was mentioned tonight, uh, Raleigh Country Club has had a water truck out there, uh, and I've been there, I've seen it go around a couple of times in just one hour that I've been there, so they've been doing a good job with that. I do wanna talk a little bit about Ipswich Bay Glass when, when I can.
Tonight or next, next week?
Tonight.
Briefly.
Because I might not be here next week. And, um, for, uh, for your meeting next week, I think it's gonna be a comment gathering from the board and any of butters. And if I'm not here, I'm just gonna take those comments, and if I am here, same thing. Uh, but I'm not gonna have a, a report in one week's time, next week's for it, so, just so the board's not expecting something from me next week, so...
Well, I think if we do revisit any aspects of that, we'll take into account, you know, your report and any other input from, you know, the plans that we have in front of us. Whether it be any landscape amendments or parking or, uh, we have people on their Dropbox, whatever, if they're, the hydrological calculations, which you're also going over?
For, for the board and the, and the concom.
Okay.
Uh, you know, one thing that might come up is whether or not you open the hearing, take comments, there's no neighbors or anything, and whether or not you close the hearing or you leave it open, but you're not gonna have my report, so...
Well, I don't know if we should just postpone it for the meeting.
Well, no, you have to open it, because it's posted.
We have to open it, but I mean, then, like you said, take your recommendation, not get, you know, we'll have contact with, uh, their representatives prior to that, and see what they want.
Well, I, I'm gonna try to be here, but I think since it's a public hearing, it's a great opportunity without having my report and responses to that, take in any comments from the board or the butters, or any butters show up.
Thank you, Bob.
And then, you know.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, that's fine.
You're not, uh, saturated with my stuff.
Have you received the new plans they're working on yet?
No.
Okay, they, they are working on new plans that show the whole site, as opposed to just a portion.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what, I saw the email.
Because it's up to the planning board to decide the scope of what they wanna review in this modification. You can keep it to the section, or you could actually open up the whole thing.
Well, we might be able to ascertain that on next week's meeting. You know, based on what we hear and what our discussion. So, all right.
Um, did we have anything to do with Hawksworth tonight?
No, I, um, I put that on the agenda because I thought the bank would have the revised tripartite, but they don't.
They don't, okay.
I don't know if that's something that needs to be on the agenda, if you're just signing it, you've already voted on it. Should be, okay.
All right, yeah, I'm motioning.
I'll just keep putting it on the agenda, hoping for it.
I have a second?
Second.
Close the favor.
Aye.
Thank you.